We sent building information?
Yeah.
You know, I think we did. We did do a great job, and I think I want to thank the local people who presented the presentation.
I think you guys are online. Um, I think you can email now. Because I think you guys will all like everybody's wrong. We're only nine degrees. It's just down to the streets. But I don't know. I guess in here. Um, but moving so, um, I think you're all.
Angela is a resident of San Marcos.
Right. Yeah, great. Yeah. Um, I think it's. Oh. Wait, in the far area or you talking about the condos that are on. What's it called? It's. It's on. Or. Yeah. Actually, I think it's interesting. It was. It's. Yeah.
I don't.
You're like, I don't know. It's very well.
No, it's good. Good job. Very nice to you. That raises. It's really impressive, you know, your city. With Simmons City Council.
I'm sure this is.
At the time that you listened. Oh, you did? Um, at the booth?
Oh, yeah. We did. No.
Oh, right. Too soon, too soon to be like that.
You know.
Which you had.
So. Because of all.
She had. Well, maybe.
Oh, yeah.
Some of their HOA.
Yeah, and actually.
Did you guys say?
Two of us. And Musgrove.
We should. I mean, I should. Yeah. Yeah. He used those.
Just feel like also like I feel like most of my friends.
Yes, D G D.
People are also in a position where they have a free time to do because of positions that they have at work or because they're retired. And so they could just, they could just go and charge cars a lot, you know? And so you can, you don't have that free time, you know? So you're like, I want to charge.
Do you want to go back? Because they say the wall is in the top.
That's why I like the ones with the car spot outlets, because you see, you can't do them. But I feel like they're pretty only, like, maybe like you're not supposed to be putting in by like the best.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Those, which are Tesla stations.
Yeah, no, I did that.
Yeah, there's not really. Yes, that's.
I'm sorry, I'm. I'm. I'm living. One hour. Three hours. And it's. My neighbor. Yeah. So he is. I. I'm selling for the state. Well, I'm excited. The break isn't too small. Um, I'm. 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 I'm sending to.
There one.
Just did something I love to six two.
Actually, I've two things.
We all have.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the San Marcos City Council meeting for June fourteenth. And I call this meeting to order. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could please remain standing, we have Tanis Brown here this evening for an invocation. Welcome, Tanis.
All right. Thank you, City Council and Mayor and City Staff. The work of the city never stops. Even though many of our city offices close at the end of the day, many of our city representatives and staff attend public meetings or host sports activities, and our city rangers are out making sure that our parks are locked up for the night. The traffic lights continue to operate. Our sheriff and fire department are on call twenty-four seven. Our Public Works Department may be called on in an emergency situation. Our city works full-time on our behalf. So as we gather tonight to participate in this meeting, let us be mindful of the effort it has taken by many to make it possible, and let us be thankful that we have the ability and the opportunity to contribute. Whether we are residents, business owners, students, elected officials, volunteers, educators, public and nonprofit employees, we are here because we have a vested interest in San Marcos, our community. We have come to listen, to share, to praise, or maybe question the issues that our council will be addressing tonight. We are thankful for the time each of you spend on research and understanding both the positives and the negatives of each decision that you're called on to make. We put our trust in you to make decisions on our behalf. These decisions will become our future reality. We celebrate the freedom to be here this evening and to share in the continuing process of governing our city. Let the meeting begin.
Thank you. So when I said invocation, sometimes it's a message, and thank you, Tanis, for doing that. We, we welcome all religions and also all positive messages. So thank you very much, Tanis. Okay, next will be our roll call. Mr. Scollack.
Councilmember Musgrove. Councilmember Nunez.
President.
Councilmember Walton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. Okay, if the council could join me in the front, we have a presentation or proclamation for the LGBTQ plus Resource Center, I think will be joining us. Okay, so this evening we have a proclamation for the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes Pride Month. Whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, and the City of San Marcos is a multicultural, diverse community comprised of residents, businesses, and visitors who come from all walks of life. And whereas the uprising at the Stonewall Inn in June nineteen sixty-nine sparked a liberation movement that continues to inspire us to live up to our nation's promise of equality, liberty, and justice for all. And whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ plus Pride Month is a time to recall the trials the LGBTQ plus community endured, to rejoice in the triumphs of trailblazers who bravely fought and continue to fight for full equality, and to celebrate the LGDBQ, the LGBTQ plus community's immeasurable culture, civic, and economic impact to our country. And whereas, since two thousand eight, the North County LGBTQ plus Resource Center and its Pride by the Beach Celebration have served, advocated for, and empowered thousands annually through counseling services, LGBT competency training to police, hospitals, and school districts, human trafficking prevention, services for homeless youth and families, veterans and active-duty military support, and other valuable support and life-saving services. And whereas, the City of San Marcos supports visibility, dignity, and equality for all by centering Pride Month as both a communal celebration and a personal celebration of both self-worth and dignity. And whereas, the City Council of the City of San Marcos calls for embracing equal dignity and equal rights by eliminating prejudice and recognizes the resilience and determination of the many individuals fighting to live freely and authentically. And whereas, celebrating Pride Month includes awareness, support, advocacy, engaging in dialogue, strengthening alliances, building acceptance, and advancing equal rights. And now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of San Marcos, California, do hereby proclaim the month of June twenty twenty-two as Pride Month, Pride Month in support of the LGBTQ plus community. So this evening, we actually have Alan Acevito?
Yeah.
Okay. And Angela Jackson from the LGBTQ Resource Center. So please come on down and accept us. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council, and I especially want to thank Randy for helping spearhead this effort for us. This is the first time that the City of San Marcos has issued a proclamation for Pride Month, and we're extremely grateful to be able to be here to receive this, both as we celebrate ten years of service with our center being open and providing the resources that you just heard about, and also we just celebrated our fifteenth annual Pride by the Beach Celebration in Oceanside this past weekend, where we have an estimated twenty thousand people come out to our family friendly, prep friendly, and drug and alcohol-free event. So we're so happy to see so much of the North County LGBTQ plus community and allies coming together to celebrate diversity, inclusion, and also centering the fact that we need to create more safe spaces for our youth, especially our trans youth who are under attack at the local school level and also nationally with policies that aim to remove their dignity, silence them from conversations in the classroom, and erase them from being able to participate in things like sports. So proclamations like this at the local level mean so much, not just to us, but to youth that we serve, and we thank you and are excited to continue to advocate on behalf of our community and continue to work with the City of San Marcos to advance equality, diversity, and respect for all. Thank you so much.
Okay, now we're moving on to our consent calendar. We have eleven items. Do we have any council members that wish to pull any of the items? If not, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to oral communications. We have a couple of speakers here. First, we have Tony Becker, Beckerman, followed by Janid Habib. And then we will have Nikki Jacobs, followed by Marie Talaka, all from Rancho Dorado. So, Tony, you're, you're up. Welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and members here. Appreciate you taking, allowing us to have the time just to speak. The issue that we're, I am talking about regarding our Rancho Dorado homeowners, I'm there, I live at twelve oh three White Sands Drive in San Marcos, and that is in the Rancho Dorado community, and I am the acting president of the HOA at this time. We have some safety issues that we've been discussing for quite some time, and I just want to kind of reiterate a few things and a few points that we've done, because we've been asking, through the sheriff and various other means, we've been asking for some support as much as possible. We had a meeting, I believe it was in May the seventeenth, we had a meeting at Simmons Park and with the sheriff and, and the community, and we had quite a big turnout, and it got a bit loud at some point, so we tried to keep it under control, but it was, it was some good information, but it really showed the, it expressed the frustration of our homeowners. One of the problems, and I'll just read what I've written, some notes here, the problem is that we know that our undesir, we have undesirables hanging out at Simmons Park area. We know that we've got that, and in the general facility of Rancho Dorado, the trails and the streets, and very likely drug deals taking place right under our noses, and that's very frustrating for us all. We understand the difficulty for the sheriff to control it alone with such limited resources, but that's why we pay the high taxes that we do. We, as a community, are willing to help or do whatever we can to protect our homes and our families. Our members have asked our HOA to help, so we have initiated a neighborhood watch, and we have engaged the services of a private security company to patrol between nine PM and six AM. But these agencies are not trained like the police. We, as a community, are going above and going above and beyond our civic duties, but we're trying. What can the city and the sheriff do to help? That's one of my questions. We haven't seen any extra or any technically, any police patrolling, with the exception of a few daytime tickets that were recently issued for not coming to a full stop at a stop sign. We rarely see a police car or motorcycle cop. We've had some homes and car break-ins. We've had increased vandalism, plus an increase in graffiti. We need help. I know I like to come up with problems without maybe some sort of solutions, at least to suggestions, not that they are the best ones, but they are some solutions. We need more frequent and visible patrols by the sheriff, especially after dark. Could we, the HOA, hire off-duty deputies in marked cars between nine PM and five AM to drive our streets and monitor the bar, the park? We believe that more police visibility could deter these bad actors. Our HOA is currently paying as much as six thousand dollars per month for a private security, which we have hired now, and they are there from nine PM until six AM. We'll be happy to designate some of those funds to the sheriff's, sheriff's department versus a private agency, if this would help. We are respectfully open to all ideas and all suggestions, but we really need your support, and we really need it now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm assuming that you're all talking about this, but it is an agendized item, so we can't have full discussion on it. I, I guess, I, I do have a couple of questions for you. The first one being, have you had a neighborhood watch meeting where our crime prevention specialists have come out with?
Yes.
Okay. And then the second thing would be that staff can, well, staff will go ahead and, and talk to you and figure out what, what can be done next. But again, it's not an agendized item, so we can't have a full conversation about it. But they will follow up with you, and, but thank you for coming, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker will be Janid Habib, followed by Nikki Jacobs. And I'm sorry if I said your name improperly. That's what it looks like.
No reason at all. Thank you so much, Mayor Jones, our respected council members, staff members. Thank you. My fellow neighbors here are probably going to provide, probably have provided an overview of the situation and what we're seeking. I thought that perhaps I can share with you briefly my perspective, which might be somewhat unique or different. My parents came here as refugees in nineteen eighty-one from Afghanistan. We grew up essentially in the hoods of San Diego, low income, modest background, but we worked our way up, worked hard. My, our parents encouraged us to get an education like a lot of refugees here in our communities, and we did. I ended up going to UC San Diego for my undergrad, UCLA School of Law for law school, and now I'm an attorney. So I worked really hard to get to where I am. About a year and a half ago or so, in the beginning of COVID, I moved to the city of San Marcos from Rancho Penasquitos. I have two daughters, a wife, a family, and, you know, came here because of the reputation this beautiful city has for the park, Simmons Park, that was right next door to our house on Rocky Point Way, and we paid a significant sum for it. But unfortunately, in the last year and a half, you know, we've witnessed the problems that my fellow neighbors have described and will describe. Probable cause for drug dealing. Recently, we saw someone crash into a neighbor's car that could have potentially killed someone. We see rowdy individuals who are running up and down the street, and we call the sheriff, and the sheriff, you know, with all respect to all of them, they do their best. We understand they're understaffed, and, you know, sometimes they come within minutes, sometimes it takes them a while, understandably so. The point is that, you know, and I probably speak for all of us here, you know, we worked hard to get to where we are right now. I especially did. You know, growing up in the hoods, growing up in neighborhoods where my father had to, you know, hold up a knife when people were trying to break in in city heights in North Park in the nineteen eighties, you know, I, the, the reason they wanted us to get a good education and live the American dream was so we can move into better neighborhoods, so our children can reap the fruits of the American dream. And, you know, unfortunately, right now, I'm not feeling that, I'm not feeling that safe because of what's happening at Simmons Park. And so I'm just respectfully requesting the, you know, the honorable council members and, you know, Mayor Jones to take this seriously, really, and pay attention to what's happening, because, you know, I'm the first of many millennials, or whatever you want to call us, who are going to be moving into the city, and we're expecting to see a safe and healthy environment for our kids. And, you know, we want to contribute toward the city, both financially, economically, socially, you know, we want to uplift the schools, just like any other school district that's blooming right now. But in order to do that, we have to feel safe. So just wanted to share a different perspective with you all, and hope you all can take this very seriously and consider our requests. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. And one comment that I would like to make is, public safety is very important to us, too, so we, we definitely are taking your, your discussions seriously. Next would be Nikki Jacobs, followed by Marie Talaka? Talalka? Sorry.
Good evening. My name's Nikki Jacobs. I live at twenty-one fifty-two Rocky Point Way up in Rancho Dorado, so not to sound like a broken rudder, record from hearing the other neighbors, but I was told one of the ways to communicate to the city is to come to a city council meeting and, you know, tell you guys what our concerns are in hopes of making things better or getting some action. My vehicle was the vehicle that got completely totaled, that Juid was talking about, happened on April fourteenth, about nine thirty at night, by twenty-three-year-old kid who was drunk and high, and as it turns out, attempted robbery on one of the other houses at Coast Avenue in our development. So he was then hiding up at the park. I guess he didn't really know the area. I don't know. So that was really obviously upsetting for me, having to deal with that. And while I was not as involved with the neighborhood in regards to speeding and the park issues, I kind of just assumed the board was dealing with it, from what I'd been told, but I noticed there wasn't a lot of action being taken. The speeding issues that we've had on Coast and White Sands is very well-known, but what shocked me was this whole traffic study was done, and Rocky Point was completely ignored, and the majority of the people that go to the park are speeding. We have little kids all over, living in these houses. Nobody pretty much plays at all outside, because we're constantly yelling at people to slow down. We try to put like, kids playing, you know, slow down. Nothing really seems to happen. There's, I have seen a few sheriffs driving through in the last month and a half since this happened. It's not as frequent as I had hoped it would be. So I'm requesting help. We did have that meeting up at the park. The liaison said that a park study was done, but when I asked, will we be able to find out what your recommendations are, the answer was no. We'll just, if there's recommendations and they're approved, we'll just make the changes. I said, well, how, you know, how, don't you communicate to the neighborhood? The answer was pretty much no. So that's a bit frustrating, that if you are making changes, which would be fantastic, it would be great if we knew what they were, so that, you know, we feel like we're being heard. As Tony said, you know, we want to have, offer suggestions. We have a petition here that I have signed. I don't know what procedurally the right thing is to do as far as submitting it to the city, but one of our ideas was making Rocky Point, and there's a cul-de-sac right off of Rocky Point, which is called Island Drive, where after sunset, it's permitted parking only, so that that will allow us to be able to enforce people parking in front of our houses at night, because all they're doing is going up to the park. So one way of reducing that would be if you don't have a permit, you can get towed. All of us are in favor. Every house has signed on Rocky Point and Island. So if anybody's willing to give me direction on what I do, whether I submit, submit that here, or if that technically has to go through the HOA, I don't know what the procedure is.
You, you can actually, thank you, Nikki, you can actually just hand that to our city clerk, Phil Scollack and Julia. They, they can take that from you.
Okay.
And then I want to make sure that all of the speakers this evening have left their contact information with their phone numbers, so that we can make sure that Jack Griffin, our city manager, would be able to reach back out to you to contact you and, and be able to have good communication with you.
Absolutely. I don't think I put it on the speaker form, but where would, would I just write it down and leave it with, with you?
Yeah, you can just.
We'll get the cards back right now from the mayor.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give them to him, and then you can make sure you, you get that.
That would be great. I just. I'm just respectfully asking that this, this issue be taken seriously, not that you don't take it seriously, but that how serious of an issue it is for us, because we live it every single day, seven days a week, and especially now in summer, it picks up even worse.
Yeah.
The park rangers have been great, but one of the other issues is we're noticing eight, nine, ten o'clock at night, the park gate still isn't locked. And when we've talked to the rangers, it's, I'm short-staffed, there's not enough guys, there's eighteen parks to close, and, you know, that's discouraging to hear. So if there's any way to hire more guys, or, you know, figure out a better way, we'd be, we'd be really grateful.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Nikki. And, and I will give these back to. Okay, we do have one more, oh, I'm sorry, two more speakers. We have, oh, sorry, I have to get my glasses on. Marie Talakla, and then Marlene Walder. I'm sorry if I said your name wrong.
No problem. Everybody does. So, yeah, I'm also from Rancho Dorado, living on two one five nine Rocky Point Way. I'm actually a veteran of the street, lived there for fifteen years, probably one of the oldest residents there at this point in time. And over these fifteen years, you know, I've seen some things happening years ago, but recently it's gotten a lot worse. My son's car was broken in recently at night, and we definitely see drug dealing, we see cars driving up towards the park, and, you know, five, ten minutes later, two, three cars drive right back down full speed. So the idea that we had, you know, usually, you know, people come here and with complaints and asking for help, we're actually coming in with an idea for a solution. And that idea is what Nikki submitted a petition for, and this is to put a no parking sign after dusk and, you know, from dusk to dawn. Basically, parks open hours. So during open hours, people are welcome to come in, go to the park, park on the streets, since parking is limited, but after night, you know, we would like them not to be there. And when we talked to the sheriff's office at the committee meeting, you know, what they said is they come in, they can chase people out, they can do much, and then, you know, next day, the same people are back. Those people, if the gates are closed to the park, they park right outside the park itself. So our idea was that when sheriff comes in at night, he can ticket those cars if there is a no parking sign. And if somebody gets a ticket once, twice, three times, we're going to stop coming. And if somebody gets a ticket once, twice, three times, we're going to stop coming. So maybe it's a small step forward, but, you know, that's, that's our idea, and I've seen that done in communities around other parks, around schools, around, you know, highly congested areas where residents have difficulty parking. So, you know, I thought that would be something that we could do in our area. So, you know, I'm not going to repeat what everybody else said, because, you know, I think you guys understand the point. If we come up with some more ideas, we'll definitely come over, and, you know, we would appreciate your help, maybe with the parking, parking signage.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. And I'm gonna, our, our city clerk is going to come and get your phone number from you. Thanks. Marine Walder.
And that's Marlene.
Yeah, Marlene.
Marlene, yeah.
Yeah, Marlene Walder.
Okay. I have two issues. Oh, thank you for seeing me again, as usual. One is the issue with what the homeowners have received for their rent increase, and that was partial fixing of the holes in the streets, and they did two streets. They didn't exactly sear seal any of the cracks. They did where the street had split an inch apart, where you would catch your high heel. But the guy who did the slurry part of it kind of missed a lot of the divisions, because they weren't always a straight line. Then they closed the next day, the jacuzzi, and it's closed till probably, maybe even next year before we do the rent review again, because it's going to cost too much to fix. They've been band-aiding it since I moved there, and the guy who came out to inspect it had said the electric was a safety feature, and it had to be all redone. And as I had stated when I first started complaining, that the pool used to have nightlights, and because it went out and the electric was faulty in the pool, they did not want to turn it back. Well, it turns the electric, it's just as bad in the jacuzzi, so they closed it. And it's going to cost over $20,000. Well, if they wouldn't have been band-aiding it for two months every year during the summer, maybe they could have saved that money and did something, but they didn't. And there are other things that are still issues, and one of them is, we're talking about theft. We've been broken in a few times, and Friday night or Saturday, they broke into the clubhouse, the office, the kitchen, and broke our stereo, whatever the system for audio system for our bingo, and stole the bingo stuff and money in the clubhouse. Well, I had called and warned her because Casita Del Sol had a break-in also. Well, she found out yesterday, I guess, when the police were there, nine other mobile home parks have had their offices broken in. We've asked for cameras at the clubhouse because we have break-ins quite often, but this one was even worse. And, I mean, let's face it, the park is old, security was different, but our door leading to the office is leveler windows, not, you know, the old-fashioned four-inch pieces of glass, and they pulled it out, put their hand in, and opened the door. Now, when you keep money in an office, you have to have better security than just being able to take a piece of glass out and opening a door. They are refusing to spend any money. And I've been there 35 years, that door didn't change in 35 years, nor did the security, nor have the roads, really. They did a Band-Aid now, and that's all they ever do. And I hope when we come for rent review this time, no matter what, it'll be refused if the jacuzzi hasn't been fixed by then, and the streets will be needed, because there's now new potholes forming, and they didn't fill in where the things are going. The crime rate has become horrendous for the police officers in the city now, and it is all over. I mean, it's not just San Marcos, but I feel for you, because we have drug dealers in our park, we have underage kids, and she says, oh, I didn't rent to them. Well, then why are they in the park? It's because the owners don't want to work with us and get them out of the park, and they already know some of them are stealing. I had my hose cut three times now, new hoses that I put on, and three times they have cut them, and I've been told it's to siphon gas. Our cars get broken into, and we're a private community, and things just keep going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. Okay, so everyone, I think, has left their phone number with our city clerk. Okay, all right, then we're set. So city staff will be reaching out to you. So moving on to our next item of business, item number 12, Resolution 2022-9032, adopting the budget of the city of San Marcos for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022, and the capital improvement program budget for the five fiscal years ending 26, 27, and appropriating money out of the treasury for budget purposes, and Resolution 2022-9033, authorization, or authorizing appropriation and transfer of funds for the establishment of an appropriated reserve for future expenditures and/or contingencies for fiscal year 2022-23. And before we get started with staff, I would like to say that we have several Budget Review Committee members here today, so if you could please stand to be recognized, we sure appreciate you. Thank you, let's clap. Thank you so much for coming, and, oh, so you have a, you have a helper today, do you?
I do, a future Budget Review Committee member.
Okay, well, hopefully she's really good with the numbers, then. So welcome.
Thank you. Honorable mayor, city council members, my name is Chris Freeman, I'm the current chair of the Budget Review Committee. I'm here today to introduce the fiscal year 2223 operating and capital improvement projects budget for approval. Jack and Lisa will go into great detail regarding what's in the budget proposal, so I won't steal their thunder. Instead, I'll briefly tell you a little about what the Budget Review Committee does. The BRC is comprised of eight members of the public that meet with staff during the budget creation process. The committee listens to staff's assessment of the current fiscal position of the city, and we have the opportunity to ask questions and give our input. Budget review meetings are open to the public and held during evening hours, but despite that, we rarely have many residents attend. I understand the city's finances can be a daunting topic for those that might not be familiar, but I encourage, an easy way to get up to speed is by reading the short opening transmittal letter from city manager Jack Griffin that's at the beginning of the proposed annual budget document, which is available through a link on tonight's agenda. I'd like to thank my fellow Budget Review Committee members that are here tonight, Vice Chair Rosario Jennings, Jim Knowlton, Marie Marchenko, Gail Martin, Kathleen Smith, Glenn Nguyen, and Charles Zoll. All of you have made it a pleasure to participate in this process, and you should be recognized for giving your time and attention to this part of the budget approval process. With that, I'll turn it over to staff for their presentation on the 2223 operating and capital budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we'll, we'll double-team it, we'll triple-team it, but we'll start off, Lisa will walk you through the part of the presentation on the operating budget, and Louis will walk you through the capital part of it.
Thank you, Jack, good evening. Today's presentation will walk through the operation and maintenance budget, will cover the general fund, do a brief overview of the current fiscal year FY22, and then we'll move into FY22, or 23, revenue and expenditure overviews, as well as infrastructure and rehabilitation replacement funds, our general fund reserve balances, and then we'll talk briefly about planning for the future before I turn it over to Louis to speak about the capital improvement program.
Can you speak into the microphone a little bit more?
Sure, is that better? So our first slide, we'll discuss the current fiscal year overview. In FY22, the revenue has begun to return to pre-pandemic levels. We're seeing an increase in sales tax numbers, and they're expected to remain strong as the economy continues to recover. Property tax grew in FY22 by 3% over prior year. Expenses are also ramping up, and they have not yet reached pre-pandemic levels due to supply chain issues and staffing shortages, but our estimates and projections are consistent with our mid-year projections brought to council in February. For FY23, we're anticipating an increase of 7%. This is compared to prior year adopted budget. That's partly due to sales tax revenue increasing, property tax increasing, as well as rental income and charges for services. Our major revenue sources are projected above pre-pandemic levels for FY23, so we're very happy with that. This pie chart shows our general fund revenue projections. As you can see, our sales tax and property tax are about 55% of the total revenue. And our 23 expenditures, which I think everyone is most interested in, were returning to pre-pandemic operating levels. So we're seeing normal annual increases totaling about $6 million, partly contributed to, with our sheriff's contract costs, employee benefits and contract costs, our regular purse costs, and our normal unaccrued, or accrued liability payment for our CalPERS. We also are having a normal parks and rec programming and events starting up again. We're returning to normal public works operations, and we've included eight positions in the FY23 budget as an effort to return to pre-pandemic staffing levels as well. The FY23 budget also includes infrastructure fund transfer, and we are seeing a rising cost of normal operating and expenses due to inflation as well, so we've included a 3% increase in our budget to account for that as well. This next pie chart provides a general fund operating expenditure by function. You'll notice that the fire services and the law enforcement make up almost 50% of this pie chart. We also have general government services, which includes administrative expenses, public works, development services, parks and rec, our rehab transfer, which almost is a 1% of this total pie, but also notable to mention, and then other financing uses. Our infrastructure rehabilitation and replacement funds for '23 have been programmed. We're contributing about $1.2 million in FY23 to this fund. We'll go over balances in a moment, but this fund includes vehicle replacement for fire, as well as public works operations. We are also going to be scheduling EMS ambulance re-chassis in FY23, as well as an emergency operations center equipment upgrade, HVAC improvements at Fire Station 1, playground improvements, and a city firewall upgrade to improve our cybersecurity. This next table demonstrates the balances of our infrastructure rehabilitation replacement funds. As you can see, after we have our balances from FY22, our scheduled FY22, '23 projects, we are left with a $3.9 million balance in infrastructure funds for the council to dedicate to future projects. This next slide and table demonstrates our general fund reserves. Per council policy, we budgeted a 40% minimum for our liquid unassigned reserves that equates to about $36 million as a result of our $89.4 million budget that we're bringing to you this evening. Now, this last slide is something for consideration, not something that we've had to deal with in FY23 necessarily, but something that we want to discuss. We will be planning for the future. Staff will be considering the following economic indicators as we move forward. We're seeing a continued rise in inflation. We're aware that the Federal Reserve has signaled towards additional interest rate increases, potentially next quarter. And then we're uncertain of property and sales tax conditions. Currently, the forecast is positive, but if a recession comes our way, that may affect our overall budget. And Jack may want to elaborate on this a little bit more.
Yeah, I think on the, the sales tax, we have, we have a consultant who we use to help us with the sales tax, and they actually had been, about a month or so ago, recommending about a 4% growth for next year, and they've actually downgraded to about a 2% growth in sales tax, which is what our, our budget actually reflects in terms of, compared to the actual number we're seeing this year. But there's lots of uncertainty right now. The, the number today on the producer price index was over 10% again, and that usually is a leading indicator of continued inflation on the consumer side, so Lisa had mentioned that we had bounced the expenditure budget up 3%. That was after all the departments had submitted and tried to take into account some inflation that they were already seeing, and so we just sort of artificially bumped everybody up on their budgets by about 3% on the supplies and services, just as a, as a, I guess, as a hedge or a shock absorber about, you know, what might happen in the coming year. And then having that $3.9 million in reserves in the infrastructure fund certainly gives us flexibility if the economy does sort of turn in a negative direction, and we start to see these revenues not grow as much as we'd hoped, or even turn the other way, because in a recession, the sales tax can go the other way and, and drop a little bit. So we think the budget we brought you gets us to where we wanted to be at this point in time, coming out of the recession, or now, the session out of the pandemic. If you, if you look at this expenditure budget, it's about 16% higher than it was four years ago, and we were growing at about 4% a year in terms of a budget, so we kind of returned back to the glide path that we had been previously on. So that was our goal coming out of the pandemic, getting to this point. And then, as you know, the big piece of our operating budgets this year, we have a significant amount of one-time federal ARPA money in there, so that makes the, the challenges in having those shock absorbers built into this budget more important, because we'll have a pretty good drop in one-time revenue, but a lot of these expenditure increases are in the staffing side, so they're going to stick around. So it's going to be a bit more of a challenging budget in '23, '24, but we think we've set that up to be very manageable once we get there, unless things really deteriorate quickly in the economy, which obviously isn't something we just have to deal with.
Well, don't add that part.
Well, it's, reality's important.
I know, I know, but, you know, just saying.
Jack, real quickly, if that does happen, do we have a contingency plan? Has that already been, a model put together where we draw back?
Yeah, we've gotten pretty good at that over the last couple of years. You know, so part of it is, you know, every city has, or every city, you have staffing changes, people just, you know, obviously come and go, and so if you need to delay filling positions that are, are open, or just decide to freeze positions, that's usually how we do it first. We try not to affect the current employees, but if, if we see things turning negative quickly, we can really ratchet down those kinds of things. We can obviously make, you know, reductions in some of the operating things. You know, if, if inflation in one particular sector goes much higher, we can do less of that, maybe, and so, we just have to sort of be nimble. But I think that we certainly, over the last two, three years, dealing with what we've dealt with, it was completely unexpected, we've been able to adjust pretty, pretty, pretty well and deal with it. And I think to land at this point, you know, as you've heard me say, every city got hurt by the pandemic, we got hurt a little worse because of the rent piece of it, which is not as common in other cities, especially of our size. And so I think we're bouncing back probably quicker than we expected, getting back to that normal trajectory. So I'm confident that if things go bad, we'll be able to adjust. Thank you.
One, one of the things I'd like to make note of is, Jack, I really appreciate the fact, we've, and we've been this way historically, we have not used one-time monies in a way that's irresponsible, going out and hiring a bunch of new employees. And I, and I speak to many of the other mayors in other cities on a very regular basis, and many of them are having to kind of rethink that and say, well, if things aren't going well, and maybe a year from now, or two years from now, they're looking at laying folks off. So I'm, I'm glad that we're not in that position, but that's really been the San Marcos way. And as you put it, we are, what did you say? I can't remember, but our old city manager used to say, we have to be, oh, I think you said nimble. He said, quick, quick on our feet, able to withstand things and be able to be nimble. I think that's an important part of what's happened in being the San Marcos way, that we've always been very conservative in that way, and I really appreciate that, because that does put us, you know, above, above a position where we then have to get rid of, you know, a bunch of employees, which we certainly don't want to do. We want to be very slow and steady, so I'm, I'm really glad that we've kept that.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the first things when we, when we started meeting up with the BRC members in February was, our goal was that this year's budget was not going to be as difficult, but '23, '24 was going to be more difficult, and we didn't want to move up and then have to move back down quickly. And so that was, as we developed this, that was always in our, in our mind as to how to make sure that when we get out to that more difficult year, it's, it's a smooth transition into it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments of staff?
I have a question. Jack, can you explain, because I don't think, maybe some people don't realize, we don't get the same percentage of property tax that other cities get. Aren't we one of the lowest cities in the county?
We are one of, we are, we're the lowest city. We do have some on the fire protection district that brings us up, but we're still in the lower third of cities. It's, it's a weird nuance of California that not every city gets the same percentage of sales tax from its assessed valuation as other cities. So for example, we're at seven point one percent, I think, on the city and six or seven percent on the fire protection district. Some other cities get thirty percent or plus or more. And it's a relic of Prop thirteen in the seventies and all that kind of thing. So, yeah, so we do not keep as much of a person. So a person who, for every dollar of property tax, for instance, Coronado gets thirty, I think four cents, we get seven. So, and, and it's, and it's different in every city, so that's kind of the range. So, yeah, we're, we're at the bottom end of that, which is why the city took on the sort of entrepreneurial stance it took way back when and got into the property business and the rent business because it knew that that, that number would never, ever change. Assessed valuations grows up, goes up, but our share doesn't get any bigger. And so that was one of the reasons the city diversified its revenue portfolio to provide the kind of services we do.
And why can that never change?
That's state constitution, that's state constitution from back, back in the day.
Okay, thanks.
And we've served our citizens well with, with such a small amount of, of sales tax and property tax. Yes, council member.
Thank, thank you. First, nothing's permanent. We, someday, someday, constitutions can even change.
That's true.
So first, I, I echo the thanks to the Budget Review Committee and staff for this preparation, especially this three-ring binder, which is really excellent. And it's so easy to go through this, and I really appreciate that. I just have a couple of specific questions, Jack, on a couple of items. One is public facility fees fund. I, I noticed that, that there is an, an ask of roughly twenty-four million dollars for the next budget year, which is substantially higher than the, the previous year. And I'm curious as to what we, what we can expect as a public, the, of the use of those funds. I'm sorry, it's on the, the section which is public facility fees? Four oh two, yeah.
So the, the twenty-four million is what we're projecting we'll receive in fees from development in the coming fiscal year. So we make, we make an attempt, which is mostly science, but there's some art to it, to try and guesstimate how many new houses are going to get built, how much commercial is going to get built. So, and then what the timing of that is because those fees typically get paid at building permit issuance. Sometimes later, if they do a deferment to occupancy permit. So we, we make an attempt each year to estimate what we think those revenues will generate. And then they go into the, the pool of funds. So if you look at the bottom of that page, there's one, two, three, four, seven categories of expenditures that those funds can then be used for. And typically, as you can see in, in the budget, we're projecting twenty-four million, but we're only projecting about forty-five thousand in new expenditures from the fund. This fund, you build them up over time so you can do big picture cop capital improvement projects. So a good example of current capital improvement projects would be the creek. There's PFF, Public Facilities, who we call PFF, is in the creek. It's in our design agreement with Caltrans for the Walden Park Interchange. It's in our agreement to fund with the developer Discovery Street through the Twin Oaks Valley Road. And so there's a lot of like larger ticket item projects in here that takes years to build up the funds to then be able to do them if you didn't want to issue debt to do that. And then there's some other smaller components of that that we would use this. So we've used, when we did the drainage improvement project through the Grand Avenue property, that came out of the drainage component of the PFF. So those are the kinds of projects that get funded from here. So it's collected citywide. There's an ordinance that lists the improvements and will actually be bringing an update of that to you in the next fiscal year in terms of that fee.
And is it fair to say that, that, that we get the, the jump in revenue because of the Discovery Village South occupancy?
Right. So, yeah, and I, I think in that case, yeah, in that case, I think we did a deferral agreement with them. So instead of paying a building permit, they pay at, out occupant, well, before occupancy, right before occupancy. But you have other developments, the one right across the street here, that's going in on Mission and Woodward. You'll have houses in the Highlands. So there's a variety of projects around town that pay into that and, and into those components.
Okay, thank you. And I had a question also about the city affordable housing fund. Today, of course, we all were in attendance at the opening of El Dorado Two, a new affordable housing development here in San Marcos, which was pretty exceptional. And, and this item, which is at the section two oh three, it's, it is the inclusionary housing fees received for this year. And, and you, and the, the budget requested is a, is the two and a half million dollars. Where, where do we expect those to come from?
So those come, those fees are paid by developers of for-sale residential dwellings who do not build inclusionary within their project. So a, for, a for-sale developer has an option to make either fifteen percent of their units affordable on-site or they can pay what we call the in-lu fee, which is what this fee is. And they, and they pay that to the city, and then the city can use that to assist affordable housing developments throughout the city. So if you actually, if you look to, to the next page, you can see there are three projects where we're budgeting funds out of this fund, recommending funds for developer loans for Mariposa Two, Villasorina, and Mariposa, well, Mariposa One and Two, Phase One and Two. So that's where we tend to, because we don't get any money in any real way from the post redevelopment world. This is our, pretty much our sole revenue source for affordable housing. And so the, the revenue comes in exclu, almost exclusively from those development fees. And we will be also bringing that, an update to that ordinance to you in the coming fiscal year. And also the question of whether to start to go back and apply it to rental construction since there's been case law that has changed in recent years in that regard. Since the city originally wanted to adopt the ordinance, required it of all residential development if they didn't put affordable on-site. There was a case called the Palmer Case. The city amended its ordinance to be compliant with the Palmer Case that said rental didn't have to do that. That case has been reversed, and so now cities can come back and impose it for res, for rental. So we'll, we'll be bringing that forward for your consideration this year too.
So we're forecasting as to developers that would have to pay the in-lu fee and estimate that's about two and a half million?
Yeah, and so if you divide the two point four by the ninety-three hundred dollars, which is the fee, it works out to about, what, two hundred and fifty or sixty units is what we're projecting would be permitted this coming fiscal year. And again, that's, we look at the trends of where our permit issuances were, and we take our, our best get. It's, that's a number we'll never get dead on, right? Because we might do better or worse.
And then just lastly, our, our Art in Public Places Fund. Are we continuing to grow that fund?
Yes.
Okay.
So that is imposed on developments within the heart of the city-specific plan area, which also includes the University District. So that's the area around here. And it goes up, up to an oaks, pretty far. And so those developments, non-residential developments pay, they can either do art and avoid the fee or they can pay the fee, and then the city can use that to assist developers to put art in, anywhere in the city. Actually, it's paid for from the heart of the city, but it can actually be used anywhere in the city.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
And North City has used some of that money to actually build some.
Yeah, and actually, we have a current application in over at Campus Marketplace.
Nice, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the topics that has come up today is public safety. Can you, Jack, talk about a little bit our sheriff with, our contract with the sheriff? What that looks like? Because I understand we have a new contract that's entered into. And maybe share that for residents so that they have a better sense of why we have such a large item of the budget that goes to, to the sheriffs?
Sure. The council approved a new five-year contract with the sheriff along with the other cities in the county. There's nine cities in the county that contract with the sheriff for police services. We approved that back in, I think it was February or March. And so that new contract starts July first. And so it contains increases in the first two years of one percent each year, of the first two years, and then three and a half percent each of the next three years. So that's pretty, well, it's below the whole inflation now. But it's even below inflation, you know, before, and it's certainly below the last contract the city's had with the sheriff, which expires in June thirtieth. And I think this year it's at four, it was a four percent increase for the current fiscal year, starting at six. It ratcheted down from six down to four incrementally over the five years. So our budget includes that one percent. And we also put additional funding in here to fund an additional full-time position, not around the clock, but a full-time shift position. So that'll be up to the sheriff to think about what the best way to use that if they, if they want to. But we built that flexibility in. I think in the past, I've always shared with you, because sometimes you'll get a question of why we don't have a police department and would it cost us less to have a police department? And the easy answer to that is no. But to give you a sense of what that no, the scale of that no is, if you look at, and this is last year's budgets, because not all of this year's budgets are available or adopted yet. So off the FY twenty-one, twenty-two budgets, if you look at all the cities in the county that have police departments, with the exception, I don't include San Diego because they're obviously a beast to themselves. And I don't include Coronado because they're kind of very unique out there. So if you look at the other cities, Carlsbad, Escondido, Oceanside, National City, Chula Vista, El Cajon, the average per capita cost for those cities is three hundred and sixty-eight dollars for their police budgets. Ours is two hundred and thirty-six. So their range is actually from four sixty-seven down to one ninety, and I don't believe the one ninety number in Chula Vista. But if you were to take that average number and apply it to our budget, our police budget would be twelve million dollars higher than it is. So, and that would really restrict what the city can do in terms of all the other things that we provide. So I think that gives you a good sense of, of, of the bang for our buck with the sheriff's contract. And, and I think it's also important for folks to note, while the law enforcement's the biggest part of the budget, it's the biggest part of every city's budget. In our city, police and fire makes up less than fifty percent, as Lisa showed you on the pie chart. There's, I don't think there's any city that has their public safety making up less than fifty percent of their general fund budget. And so that really does enable the city to do lots of things. And at the same time, we're have a, the second lowest crime rate in the county. We, we're constantly in a battle with Poway to get to the bottom or the top, however you want to look at that. They don't have a freeway, so it's harder for us to do that.
Or the students.
Or the students. But I think that, you know, I think our law enforcement costs are, are in a, in a really great, solid place, and we get great service.
One other, one other thing to add to that is, one of the things that I appreciate most about our sheriff contract is we have all of the services available, but we don't have to pay for them all the time. Like we have Aстria, we have SWAT, we have all of these things that I'm hoping we never need, but that they, we just call and it, and it comes in. The other thing is many of the cities that have their own police forces, they don't have as many deputies on call as we do, being that we are a contract city. If we have an issue, we can call them, you know, call several in, and, and they are here pretty quickly. So that's, I think, one of, well, some of the benefits, I think, having a sheriff contract, which I have people ask me all the time too, and I'm like, well, these are the reasons. And then they go, oh, okay, that makes sense, so. Any other questions, discussion? No?
So we'll, we'll move over to the capital side.
Okay.
Louis will walk you through that.
You've got a little bit going on over there, don't you, Louis? So with the creek project?
Yes, a couple of things. Thank you, Jack. My name is Louis Clapp. I'm the Principal Senator for CIP. And so I thought I'd walk you through some highlights of our capital improvement budget for this year. Our capital improvement budget, as you know, is a five-year plan. Currently, there's fifty projects on it for this coming fiscal year. There's new appropriations of about fourteen point one million. In addition, there's twenty point one million that makes up the rest of the new appropriations, contributing to an overall budget of around two hundred and thirty-six million dollars. I'd highlight that the creek is a hundred and twelve million of that, the creek project, with about three and a half, three point six million dollars in new appropriations for this year. This pie chart here shows this coming fiscal year's appropriations for new funds. As you can see, city facilities, the creek district, streets are the main contributors to the new appropriations. The only category not represented here is planning, simply because we don't have any new appropriations for planning projects. But this gives you an idea of, of how the budget is, is split up for this coming year. Moving on to the completed projects, I thought I'd highlight some of the accomplishments this year. We have eight, an annual ADA improvement project. We had about seventy intersections. We installed new audible pedestrian push buttons with that money. We've had several facilities projects listed there, including a roof replacement, some sidewalk. And the clarifier we have at Public Works, we performed a study on it to see what kind of repairs we need. Discovery Lake, we added an aeration system to help with some of the environmental concerns. And we completed the Grandin Traffic Signal Improvement Project as well. Moving on to the active project lists, to highlight a couple of things here. As I'm sure you all know, Bent Avenue has been opened. While that's not technically complete, there'll be some time closing that out, but we're really excited about that. And we still have all the other components of that project going on all at the same time. Via Vera Cruz, Discovery Street widening, Paseo del Royal Park, Habitat Restoration, and, and some other grading. We also have our general plan ongoing. We have Discovery Street and San Marcos Boulevard intersection, which is scheduled to start any day now. Another ADA project over near Mission Sports Park. Fire Station Three upgrades, we've hired a contractor, we're working with them to try to get that going. Slurry project on Borden Road, our Las Postes Pool Storage Structure. And we still have our electronic plan check ongoing. As far as the parks, there's a first phase of the park site over at Rancho Coronado, Rancho Tesoro, where we've hired a contractor, we're scheduling them to get that project kicked off. And of course, last but not least, we still have our traffic projects where we have an adaptive signal study, our traffic management system enhancement, our TMC that's ongoing. And we also have a, a new project, we received a grant for, for installing retro reflective backplates on all our signals to help with safety. The new projects that were added this year, having on the facility side, but also we have a streets project where we'll be repairing the pavement on Rancho Santa Fe from approximately Melrose to Island. I'm sure you're all aware of that area has, we've been, Public Works crews have been doing a great job kind of keeping it together, but it's time to replace that and restore that. And we have some new facilities projects with our future fire station feasibility project. Our clarifier replacement, I mentioned before, we completed the study. It needs to be repaired, so that'll be a new facilities project, as well as a couple of projects here at City Hall for waterproofing and some elevator upgrades repairs. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about our CIP program.
Well, I'm pretty proud of the fact that we're finally getting the creek project finished. And, yeah, you're right, Bent isn't open all the way yet, but it sure is a huge improvement because you won't see any cars there stuck in the water. I have a question about the gas tax. And sorry, this just kind of occurred to me this afternoon, so I, I didn't actually have a chance to ask you, Jack, on this specifically. But the fact that the, the gas tax is going up three point one percent, is that going to change what we'll be able to do? Does that, does the three point one cents go into a kitty? Do we get more? Do we know how that's, and I believe those are SB one funds?
Yeah, there's a formula that the SB ones are apportioned to all the cities in this, in the state. So presumably, if it goes up three point one percent, everybody will see an increase as well. And, and we use those funds for our street overlay program. So every dollar of extra that comes in is a little bit more street we can overlay. So it, it's going to be, it's an interesting bidding time. Fuel costs, you know, slurry is a fuel product. So we won't really know the exact amount of quantity of streets we'll be able to resurface until we go out for bid and, and see what the unit prices are. But, yeah, the increase in the numbers should help us.
Okay. And then on the Rancho Coronado Park, we have hired the contractor. Do we have an estimate of when we'll start moving? we have an estimate of when we'll start moving forward on that? I've had a lot of people recently, because, you know, the kids are out for the summer and they're excited to get them, uh, playing the sports. Uh, do we know when that's going to be? Um, we're going to have some sort of timeframe on that?
Uh, yeah, we have, um, already had the pre-construction meeting. They're getting together some of their stormwater submittals to make sure the site's protected. So, um, I think the schedule's within the next month is when they were originally scheduled to start. It depends on them kind of getting all those permits and those initial submittals into us, but definitely this summer we'll be under construction.
Okay, and then we'll be able to add that into our field allocation, right? Okay. Because I know, um, I, I guess girls softball's really blowing up right now, and I, I think it, I don't know, I think some of it has to do with Padres are doing well, the girls are like, "Hey, we want our, our, um, you know, our bats to hit too," and so they're, uh, pretty excited about the softball. So, that'd be, um, something, um, you know, get that underway. We would love to see that. And then, um, on the, uh, traffic adaptive signal study, that's on Nordal, right?
Yes, the corridors general on, on Nordal.
Perfect.
Kind of crossing the street over to Auto Parkway, that area.
Okay, perfect. All right, okay. Um, any other, yes, Councilmember Musgrove?
Since we're on traffic, Louis, the, I don't recall how you described it, but the, I'm assuming what you're talking about are the yellow reflective perimeters that offer some relief when you have a, let's say, the multiple signal lights, or maybe the sky is the backlit. Easier to see the traffic lights as you're moving forward?
Correct, yes. We have a, we have a grant, so every backplate will get that bright, um, reflective, uh, backplate on all of our signal heads in, in the city.
Fantastic. And the other one, the feasibility study for the new fire station, or a new fire station. Do we know when that will commence, how long it will take, and then when we'll give a report? Jack?
Uh, so we'll be working with fire, uh, to scope that out, um, as soon as the council approves the budget and we know it's there. Uh, and, um, so I don't have a timeframe as to when we'll go out and do that, but we had a, um, we may, we'll look at this, the consultant we used to do the standard of service a while back and see if, um, this is something that they'd be interested in, or whether we put it out for an RFQ process. Um, but we'll get that going, certainly, you know, that process started here, right as the year starts.
Terrific. Looking forward to the options that they offer. Thank you.
I have, yes, um, the parks. Um, when you're talking about the Rancho Coronado Park, you're not talking about a complete master design. You're just talking about some fields.
Right, we're talking about the, the contract the, the council approved several months ago was hopefully two fields, parking area, those kinds of things. Yeah, this is, this is an interim improvement, um, to what will become a, a much larger project eventually.
And then, once there's a master plan, um, would this incorporate into that master plan, or would we maybe need to?
We, we laid this out so that it would be, we put it in the least likely place that it would have to be removed or-
Okay, good.
-significantly altered, though there'll probably have to be some level of changes, because we're not planning on paving the parking lot, for example. But we're, we're hoping that, to not have to redo this work again, that it would fit into the logical way a master plan would go.
Okay. And then my other question is, um, is Rancho Coronado the final name for that park? Because I think that's very confusing.
Um, yeah, because the community was originally called Rancho Coronado, then-
Right.
Then marketing-wise, went to Rancho Tesoro. Actually, we haven't named it yet-
Okay.
So, that's, that would, a, a formal name is coming.
Okay, good. So, we're not tied to that.
No, you're not tied to that.
Okay. I think that would be very confusing to the community. That's all I had.
Okay. Uh, anyone else? Okay. Awesome. All right, well, then, no other discussion. I would move that we approve the budget. And thank you for all the hard work. And, you know, I, 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 I think I should also mention that, you know, the department heads, I mean, when they, they do all this, uh, budgeting within their departments, I know that's a big job too, and, you know, everyone, it's a, it's a collective effort, and I don't want to, you guys are all sitting back there, thank you for all of your hard work and not coming in with a wish list that's, you know, a mile long and, um, you know, understanding that, you know, we are going to have some tougher times in the next couple of years, um, depending on what happens, and then also just, you know, where we're kind of going, we just need to be very careful. And that's the San Marcos way, so I know you all know that, but, um, I know for one, I really appreciate all that you've done. So, anyway, I would move to approve the budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All right, let's vote. Um, a motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any no's? No? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. Moving on to our next order of business, do we have any, nope, no more speakers. Reports, um, Sandag, let me find my notes here, somewhere. Um, okay, so, gosh, we, we, we're continuing to have hybrid meetings down there. Um, let's see, what else did we do? It feels like so long ago. Honestly, it feels like a month ago, but it was only a couple of weeks ago. Um, progress on major transportation projects, um, uh, meetings and events. We had a lot of actually events. Uh, we had, um, Low Sand Board of Directors meetings, OTIME Supportive Entry Project Briefing, uh, MetroLink Board of Directors, and then we, um, also went over the weighted vote distribution, uh, that didn't really change too much this last year. Um, overview of developments in the financial markets, proposed final budget, that was a little different. Um, they actually were wanting to, uh, create this interesting, uh, pot of money for some of the, um, for some of the staff, and, you know, there's been a lot of discussion on what staff members those go to, and it seems to only go to department heads, and where department heads are very much appreciated, uh, many of the lower-level, um, employees are, were having a hard time keeping some of them, and so, um, it wasn't equitable. I, I took an issue to that, so I actually voted against the, uh, budget. I didn't care for the fact that we were offering, um, many, um, raises to some of the employees, and then also this pot of money for incentive-based, uh, extra money to, uh, pay these employees, but that there's really no accountability, and there hasn't been, uh, for a couple of budget, uh, periods, which I didn't personally, um, care for. The other thing is that, you know, we're right in the middle of having this issue, well, actually on the heels of having an issue where, uh, we're, we, we need to come up with a, a policy on spending the P-card money and the taxpayer money, which I, I find to be a large issue. Uh, there is going to be another audit that should be coming out, and I think, I think they said September or October, uh, which will be the, um, uh, the reimbursements for meals and travel expenses and that sort of thing, so that we can really bring back confidence into the organization. I think it's been a really tough time financially, and, you know, we just, um, approved this regional transportation plan, $170 billion in 2020 dollars, uh, right around 270 billion with a B, um, in a year of expenditure, and then there's been a lot of discussion over the time as well, and this just actually happened on Friday, not at the board meeting, uh, but the Citizens Initiative that went out for signatures to put another tax measure on the ballot, uh, for a half-cent, uh, sales tax that would, uh, go on forever, uh, that actually did not qualify for the ballot, so you will not see that in this November, on November 8th. And so, um, I just think we need to be more careful with our, our dollars, our tax dollars. So, I voted against that. Um, and then, oh yeah, we had a closed session, which I can't really talk about, but, um, anyway, the next meeting is going to be June 10th. Um, Councilmember Musgrove, I think you might have attended that meeting. Do you have anything on any other Sandag issues? Audit Committee, you're on that.
Yeah, uh, just to, to clarify, yes, we are expecting that report, uh, September, October, and we will be making a very concerted effort with the members to increase staffing. Uh, the staffing for the Audit Committee is extremely poor. Um, and quite frankly, the, the employees are not paid commensurate with, uh, organization the size of Sandag, and that makes it a little difficult to recruit. In the time I've been on the Audit Committee, we've had three employees come and go. One was a county employee who came over to help and realized that, uh, the workload was just out of control, and the compensation was minimal, and went back to their old jobs. So, I think it speaks to the importance of why we need to have this done, and we'll certainly be making that, uh, an argument in front of the board.
And thank you for that, because I did forget that, that was one of the other things, that, uh, there is no, uh, raise for the outside independent auditor. If we want to have confidence in the organization, I think it's really important that we are doing the audits on a regular basis. They are getting done, completed with the proper amount of staffing, and then also paying, uh, the, um, out, outside independent auditor, um, to, uh, her classification, which I don't believe is happening, um, and that I have an issue with as well. Um, any other, are, have you guys had a trash, uh, for highway meeting?
The litter abatement?
Yes, thank you, litter abatement.
It has been canceled, along with, uh, Energy Working Group, of which I've been a member for a year and a half and have yet to have a meeting. So, I, I know there's going to be some consolidation and streamlining of the various committees and subcommittees, so this may be part of that process.
Okay. All right. Uh, League of Cali, California Cities, you had a meeting yesterday, did you not?
We did. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Um-
Sorry, Councilmember Nunez.
Um, uh, Councilmember Musgrove and I attended the meeting in person. We are back in person. Um, so just a little bit of housekeeping. Um, so we are back in person. We are dark next month in July, and then resume our meetings in August. And then I do want to remind, uh, the council that we do have the annual conference that's scheduled in September. So, it'll be held September the 7th through the 9th, and it will be in Long Beach. So, if you want to look at your calendars to see if you want to make that. Um, and, uh, we also had a presentation, I think it's very timely, uh, by the San Diego Water Authority. Um, they really had a lot of details about the water conservation emergency regulations that are coming down the pipeline, and, um, right, the issues that impact our, our region. Um, it sounded overall like it's, it's really surprisingly positive, and, uh, the measures that we've taken. Um, I myself had a lot of questions just after the meeting, and we weren't really, we didn't have a whole lot of time to, to get our questions answered. Um, so one of the things that, um, Councilmember Musgrove and I talked about was the possibility of having the Water Authority come to the council and, and, and speak to the council and to our residents to bring us up to speed, and hopefully, um, educate on what's expected of us and of our residents, and how we can help with, uh, with the water conservation measures. Um, anything else?
I, I, the presentation went extremely quickly, and one of the members present, uh, not to sound mean, but did kind of monopolize some of the question types, so it was difficult to get our questions in. But, I did write down some numbers, um, and it really goes to the San Diego County Water Authority and the changes they've made after the, really the '07 fire. And so, in 2012, 2016, we had a drought, and it, it's funny that they break it up by calendar years. This, this was the 1216 drought, which for a lot of us, you know, we're in a drought, or we're not in a drought. But, um, the governor at the time, Brown, ordered a 12 to 36% reduction in water usage, depending on residential, county supplies and whatnot. But, San Diego has reduced their per capita usage since 1990 by 43%, which is huge. And then talked a little bit about the diversification, which is why, uh, our Water Authority has become the model, not just for California, but for the region. And they cited a couple of articles, one of them in the Wall Street Journal, on how you can survive this, um, securing water rights, and then not depending solely on the Colorado River, which we get a lot from. But, uh, part of it is from local resources, where we've secured those water rights. And we talked a little bit about the D-SAL plant in Carlsbad, that, uh, there was another one that was scheduled to start. I bel, it was either Newport, Huntington Beach, that area, Orange County, but the Coastal Commission canceled it. They said it was, uh, the return of salt back to the ocean would make the ocean too salty, apparently. But, we get 10% of our regional water from the D-SAL plant, and I asked what, what that amount was, and it's 50 million gallons a day. So, as a region, we can assume we're using about 500 million gallons. And just one last thing, which is really interesting, um, they no longer use the, the drought restrictions as a term. They're going, uh, to be a little more pragmatic, and they're calling it dry hydrology. So, so instead of looking at it as, "Well, we can't turn on the water, we're simply going into a new phase where we're dealing with it and moving forward," which I guess that has a positive connotation.
Well, I would love to have them come and give, um, a presentation, so, Jack, if you could do that. You're actually reading my mind, because I have people-
Sandy Curl, Mayor.
Yeah, Sandy Curl. I, I, I literally am so confused by it myself, because we actually have D-SAL. We, I think, I think San Marcos has more than, through Vallesitos-
Yeah, DWD.
Is, is, is higher than 10%.
Well, that's, uh, that's for the entire-
Regionally, yeah, yeah.
San Diego County Water Authority region, right.
But I think, uh, San Marcos has a higher amount, and I believe that actually, I, I don't have the numbers, but I believe that actually, um, is, is stepping up every few years, that they get a higher amount, um, to, you know, um, delivered to us. So, for me, when I'm, when I'm like, hearing, you know, these things, and I think the next step is that you can't water outdoors any longer, which, I have fake grass in my backyard, so I'm, I'm okay with my backyard. My front yard's not going to look very good. It's a homeowners association, um, but they maintain it. So, I don't know. Is, is the next thing going to be?
Councilmember Nunez, as you recall, Sandy Curl said the state's next area for targeting is, quote, "Outdoor usage as a means of reduction."
Right.
But she didn't offer any details.
Okay.
Uh, right now, residential is less impacted than commercial or agriculture. We're taking a big hit, but I think we're next on the, on the target list.
Well, with the shortage in food, and now, you know, with our workforce and all that, that's going to be interesting if they start cutting back on ag, because that's a big moneymaker here in, in our state, so, and it provides food for people, so that'll, that'll be very interesting. Some of our produce really needs a lot, um, of-
Almonds.
Of water. Almonds, citrus.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway. Okay.
Real quickly, if you don't mind?
Yeah, sure.
We had also for the San Diego Division of Cal Cities, we had a public safety committee meeting, and I'm the representative for City of San Marcos. Um, we got, uh, again, we, we have a legislative analyst that will come in and start rattling off data, and you really can't take comprehensive notes, but they were discussing, uh, Prop 64 and some potential funding sources. I've asked for a summary report for that, and so when I get it, I'll report back to the council. And two action items, uh, that have become pretty, uh, pretty public now, if you're, especially when the primary was on, when trying to get people's interest with voting. One was, uh, online and mobile, uh, sports wagering. Uh, we heard from, uh, advocates and from both sides of that, and ultimately the, the voter by the members present to oppose that measure. And the other one is the California Sports Wagering and Unlawful Gaming Act, and that one would allow, um, entities to then partner with some of our, our, uh, tribal casinos to, um, offer that up with off-track betting and other sports betting in those facilities. And again, that was opposed by Cal Cities.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have, I have a question. Um, and this might be to Jack. Um, would it be the San Diego County Water Authority to come, or Vallesitos? I mean, who is going to set the rules for us here?
I think, I think this, I think the County Water Authority is the overarching organization, and all of the other special districts operate under their umbrella, and that's who they buy water from. So, I think to get a, the full perspective, I think the regional water authority is the right entity. Nothing against VWD, or Vista Irrigation District, or Rincon, right? There's three, three that serve in San-
Yeah.
I had, um, I had the same question, because I get served as from Vista Irrigation, so.
Okay. Yep. Okay. Uh, North County Transit District Deputy Mayor.
We meet on Thursday.
Thursday, okay. I, can I ask you about what's going on with the, the fencing?
No.
Okay. So, next time, you'll be able to bring us up to date on that?
Maybe.
Okay. Maybe. Okay, North County Dispatch, uh, Councilmember Walton.
Thank you. We did meet. We met on the 25th of May. It was a pretty brief meeting, but an important one. We passed our annual budget. Um, as always, we recognize dispatchers at the front end, and we had, uh, six recognitions, and I can't remember what they all did, but I, I will restate it. You would be amazed how many babies are born in their homes with a dispatcher on the phone. It's, uh, it's, and it's more incredible to, to, to hear it unfold. Um, but we passed a, a budget, a, a budget of $5.9 million, uh, dollars. And just for, uh, reference, uh, each city and district that participates in the North Comm pays their proportional share of that budget based on their calls volume for the previous year, and San Marcos represents about 13% of that total. Um, call volume for, it's about $750,000 is about our share as a city. We're, we are not the, the largest, of course. Oceanside, I think, takes up, um, uh, a much larger share, um, and Carlsbad and Vista- takes up, um, uh, a much larger share, um, and Carlsbad and Vista edge us out just a, a little bit. But it was a quick meeting and like they all seem to be. And, um, uh, North Comm's in good shape.
How many calls is that a year?
Geez, this is a test. Let me see if I pulled out, if I pulled out the right-
If you don't know it off the top of your head, that's fine.
I don't know it off the top of my-
Okay. And the next question is, what's going on with their actual facility? Because they've been talking about it for years. I mean, remember, when, my first six years in office, I was on there, we were talking about it. Um, so that was from two thousand seven to two thousand twelve, I think.
You know, I, I have visited twice. Once when I first was appointed and I was surprised how cramped it was and how small it was. Um, I mean, I actually really surprised. And we had conversations early on in my tenure about a, a, a long-term strategic plan, but then the decision was made just to remodel where it, where they are today. I did visit probably a year ago and, um, it was much more comfortable. But the reality is, is that they're going to need new facilities at some time in the future.
Okay.
For sure.
All right. Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, I think in the past, um, they used to have a appreciation day for the dispatchers.
Yes.
Probably haven't had it because of COVID.
Right.
But I'm wondering if they have one coming up, if maybe you could let us know because I, I went, because I was on the board at the time, but there were other people there too.
Yeah.
Just to listen to what they do and, and show your appreciation.
I'll find out.
So if you, if they're gonna have it at some point, if you could let us all know.
Yeah, thanks. That's, thanks for that, Sharon, because it is, it is amazing to hear these calls and to hear how calm these dispatchers are walking through, calmly walking people through what are probably, you know, the most serious events of their lives. So I'll find out.
Okay. When I, when I was there, um, one day I was able to put on or listen to the call. Obviously I was muted, but listened to both sides of a call and it's, it's phenomenal what-
It really is.
-gets done. Okay.
Uh, Clean Energy Alliance Report, Councilmember Musgrove.
I will do my best to be brief, Mayor. Uh, we received, uh, an update from our legislative ans- analyst and general counsel, uh, on net metering two point O. And if you're not sure what that is, if you have solar, this is the program that credits residential and commercial solar users with their excess electricity produced by their solar panels and then that energy is returned to the grid. Under consideration is the term, these credits can be banked. And while the kilowatt hour credit is a one-for-one, when they were generated can determine the relative value. So if it's produced during peak hours, it has a greater value because when it gets billed out for electricity, it has more value. Currently it's a one-for-one. We're expecting an update from the CPUC, the Public Utilities Commission, sometime September, October. We're watching closely AB twenty-eight thirty-eight, which would authorize the CPUC to authorize those electrical corporations to terminate their green tariff shared renewable energy. So for San Diego Gas and Electric customers, which we all are, it's the Eco-Choice Program where you can agree to have fifty percent of your power produced from green sources. And it would authorize the CPUC to consider whether any outstanding program costs may be recovered from the electrical corporations' non-participating payers. So essentially what it means is they're going to give SDG&E the authority to end that program and any costs that have been generated as a result or subsequent to that would be passed on to ratepayers. And what's extremely important is this would also give them the authority to pass that on to any of the CCAs. So instead of burdening those who decide to remain with SDG&E, anyone who joins a CCA would not be exempt from receiving that additional cost from SDG&E. Um, we renewed some of our contracts with some of our admin staff. Oceanside City Council has initiated the application process to join our CEA and we, we should receive this for our end of month meeting in June to review their process. Vista City Council meets later this month, so we'll probably see their application process in July, assuming they agree. And San Clemente is still considering their next steps, but, uh, very strongly suggestion that they will be joining. And if they all agree and the board approves, they will all come online in April of twenty twenty-four. And just to update you, well, we joined last year, late last year, Escondido and San Marcos residents will come online in April of twenty twenty-three. And the reason of the delay is because it had to be in by the end of the year for the CPUC to review and approve. And then it doesn't become effective until the beginning of the following year. So we are right on track where we should be.
Well, good. I was gonna ask you that question. Okay. All right. Um, next, uh, is a city council business visit. Councilmember Nunez and I went to coffee roasting today at, um, California Roasting Collective. We actually were there once before when they first opened up. And how long has that been? Has that been like two years, three years? I don't know. Anyway, it's, um, it's changed a lot. They're very, very busy. Uh, one of our, um, small businesses here, California, um, well, Old California Coffee, uh, Erin Nino, she actually started a Send Roasters, uh, during the pandemic. I was in there one day and I went, well, what's this coffee here? She said, oh, I started roasting that, um, during the pandemic. So I got on a subscription. So my coffee's now roasted here in, uh, the City of San Marcos. Oh, it actually says here, last visited. If I would just read my notes that Tess made me, um, in June of twenty twenty. Uh, and then, so now we went in, uh, to check out their expansion. And since we visited two years ago, they've added four roasters for a total of six roasters, including, uh, the Loring, which is two hu- a two hundred thousand dollar machine. Yeah, like they've got, um, all these things going on. Um, and it can actually, it's got a two-year waitlist and it can roast three hundred pounds of coffee beans per hour. That's, is that it? No, that's not it. No, I don't think that's it. Like, wait, what's that? Wait, that's it. That's it.
I think that's it.
That's, no, wait, no, that's not it. It's a little bit further. It's a really big one at the very end. Oh, that's, there it is. That's it. It's all electronic. It's got a touchscreen and everything. It's like, uh, one of those really, really fancy machines. They put them in and they actually lose, um, a lot of their moisture when they actually, um, they, they actually weigh less going in. So it fits about, I think it was sixty pounds of coffee. Let me look and see if it's in the notes. I don't see it, but it was about sixty pounds of coffee in there. Um, anyway, they, uh, have leased another suite that added the cold brew, which we did see. Um, do you wanna, do you wanna talk about the rest?
Yeah, no, that's exactly right. It really is so impressive to see how much they've expanded and they've done this during COVID.
Mm-hmm.
It really is, um, impressive. And, um, we were both there, right? Um, as you stated, Mayor, in, uh, June of twenty twenty. And, um, I think we were still during the COVID shutdown. And, um, I was really excited to go back to see because they have expanded so much. Um, Lynn did mention that part of their expansion is to add a commercial bakery to supply their Carlsbad, uh, steady state location with plans to open four other coffee shops. And, um, he did also tell us that they are currently going through the organic certification process. That will be the first in the county to be certified organic from farm to cup. So they're very proud of that. And, um, um, so I'm sure they'll let us know once they, they accomplish that. Um, so part of the online coffee subscription, Club Trade Coffee, they did say they're also very proud that they're the smallest company to be part of that. Um, so they have a lot of things that are, that are going on. And, um, they also did share that, um, they're going through the Specialty Coffee Academy where all of their baristas are trained at a very high level. And they did, um, share with us that they prefer to bring in individuals and train them from start to, to get them up to speed to be roasters. So they're very proud of that.
And Tess is, uh, going to talk to Palomar, uh, to find out if they want to start a program because it's very spe- it's very specialty, uh, which is very, um, it, it's actually pretty cool. It, it, there is definitely a lot of art to coffee roasting, believe it or not. It's like beer making. Um, the other thing is their new, uh, bakery that they're going to be adding, it will have a storefront. And the great thing is too, they'll have, uh, organic and gluten-free options as well. So that, that's, um, something that they haven't been able to find too much out there. So they said, well, if we can't find it, we'll just do it ourselves. So anyway, that's, uh, very interesting. Uh, but they're really busy. Uh, Lynn over there is doing great. Um, good to see something growing so much in the city and, you know, kind of branching out and doing other things. So it was a great visit.
Yeah, it really was.
Were there any other, um, council, um, business visits? No? Okay. Uh, moving on to council commentary, I have a few things. Um, oh, I'm sorry. I do that every time. I'm so excited about the, the stuff that's going on. Yes. So what's going on in the creek, Mr. Griffin?
Um, well, we talked a little bit about during the budget, so just a couple of highlights. Um, uh, as you know, Discovery's closed between Vieira Cruz and Applewild. Um, that's through the summer. Fingers crossed it won't be all the way through the summer, but we'll see. Uh, we'll do our best to make that last as little as, as we can. Um, a lot of utility work going on. And SDG&E will be energizing the new electric lines in Bent by the end of the month. That'll enable them to remove the temporary power lines that are right around Bent Avenue, uh, around the bridge, um, which will also then allow us to do the final paving and striping on Bent. Um, so that's, uh, that'll be fun when we're paving Bent and Vieira Cruz is closed. Um, so we'll, we'll figure out a good way to do that. Um, and then, um, there's also, uh, utility work going on right at the intersection of Vieira Cruz and Discovery in terms of the water line. Um, so hopefully that'll be, um, in service in the next few weeks. So a lot of progress is made on the utility front.
And I did see in the budget, it's a hundred and twelve million dollars now.
Yeah.
Anyway, um, okay. Uh, council commentary. Uh, today we, uh, opened up the eighty-four units at El Dorado Two. Very exciting. Being that we only approved that or started working on that back in two thousand nine, um, things take a long time. But to actually see eighty-four families, uh, with a great place to call home, that is awesome. And, uh, those are thirty to sixty percent of the AMI, which is area median income. So it's, it's, um, it's a really, uh, big help for, um, our citizens that are able to live there. And I think there are about a thousand folks still on the waiting list and about eighty percent of those are San Marcos residents. So, um, I definitely want to continue to keep pushing forward for more affordable housing, uh, deed-restricted affordable housing. And then let's talk about, um, the fireworks coming up here. Still a little bit short on our donations. I've already donated. Hopefully everyone up here has. Um, but, uh, we, we, one of the things that's always been remarkable is we have never used, uh, city funds, uh, to fund our fireworks. It's always been donations from the community and we always somehow or some way end up being able to fund them and they've been, um, great. And, you know, after last year, I hate to bring it up, but, uh, last year we had, um, our contractor had a, an issue and they weren't able to go off. So this, this year we're expecting big things from our, um, our contractor, which we have a different one this year. Um, but it's red, white and bang, boom. Red, white and boom, um, is the theme. Uh, but everything, uh, we're, is, we're excited to have it back this year. Um, but we really need some donations if possible. Um, so if you could just go to our website, I think we should have a clickable, uh, link on there, uh, so everyone can. I think it's, um, can donate, um, but any, any amount is greatly appreciated. But we're really excited to have that back again this year, um, on Independence Day, so July fourth. Any other commentary? Yes, Councilmember Musgrove.
Uh, just like to make note of two significant birthdays in, in my world, my life. Today is the two hundred and forty-seventh birthday of the United States Army, and it is also the birthday of my wife, Carol, who is not two hundred and forty-seven.
Anyone else? Okay. With that, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you for coming.